We started our meeting, started out with the pledge, followed by the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Father God, we turn to you this morning, we're thankful for a new year, we pray for grace to walk humbly before you, and we pray you would just direct us this day, as we make decisions for the county, and we pray your will would be done, be with those that protect our country, those that wear badge and uniform, that might continue to have peace, direct us further on, we pray in Christ's name, amen.
The meeting over to Beth.
Welcome everybody to our first meeting, 2016, and first thing we want to do is start the meeting off and ask if there's anyone that has any nominations for president for the Board of Commissioners for 2016.
Move Blake Gerber as president.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two, oh, one.
And now, I would ask you if there's a nomination for vice president for the board.
I would like to nominate Kevin Woodward for vice president of the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn the meeting back to our president now, Blake Gerber.
Good morning everyone.
Good morning.
First meeting here for calendar year 2016, and our first payroll for the last couple weeks is $206,875.17, made up a total of 285 claims totaling $909,540.27.
I forgot, we need a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
And I also need a motion for the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to, do you want to do that together?
Let's do it separate, we got a motion on the payroll and the claims.
Okay, I'll second payroll.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero, now we'll need a motion for the minutes, unless there's any corrections.
Motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Three, zero. Ed?
You are next.
Morning Ed. Is it snowing out?
Yes, it's snowing.
We got snow in the southern part of the county, but not the north, right?
Yeah, it's snowed Jackson County just last night.
It's what, enough to get the trucks out the mountain.
Actually, my report's right here.
Okay.
So this is just, this is just some other information I want to talk to you about, stuff like that, so, just some of the other stuff we've been doing the last two weeks, of course with the holidays and stuff like that, still running two brush crews, running brush mower in Rock Creek Township, still doing some backhoe jobs, got a few more of them to do, not too much, actually last week after we got all the rain over the holidays, we did do some grading on some stone roads, which they froze down, which is a good thing, hopefully they stay froze for a while, but it sounds like by Friday it's going to warm up again, so, did have a few washouts on the river roads, out by Veracruz and stuff like that, so we're working on stuff like that today, after the water went down, so. The sheet that I gave you is just a synopsis of the last four years, I know the last meeting I gave you what we did in 2015, just to show you what we did in the last four years since we haven't had an engineer, since I basically knew a lot of this stuff like that, shows we had 41 projects, of course last year was our big year, we had 25, some of the reimbursements that, that we've got back from me doing the ERC stuff, the bridge inspection of 108,000, the bridge 193 of 147, and I brought this to county council several times, and I'm going to bring it to you guys too, and stuff like that, that, you know, four years ago when this started, this sort of got thrown in my lap, and here you go, and there's never been any compensation for the extra work that I've done, last year with the 25 projects, it was overwhelming, a lot put on my shoulders as far as, you know, getting contractors set up and this, that, and the other, so I just gave you the comparison that I gave the council at the budget meeting of where salaries are for counties that don't have engineers and stuff like that, we do have a federal project that's going to start in, in March, I think you did, we're going to approve the check for that today to go up back to NDOT, stuff like that.
Right, that was why the claims were so high.
Yes, that's why his claims were so high and stuff like that, so I'm going to push hard to get an engineer in here, because like I said, it's just too much.
You got my email and the job description?
Yes.
Let me know what that last email was with the ERC.
Okay.
Tell me it needs to be changed, corrected, altered, or whatever.
Okay, yeah, right now my computer is down, so.
No problem.
Hopefully he'll get it up and I can check that and stuff like that, so, that's all I have.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
What I gave Roy, and we've been emailing back and forth a little bit, this is, I know we're talking about contract, or trying to get a new county engineer, but until that happens, this is the exact same general service agreement that we've signed in the times past, if you cheat and go to page D, day, D-Day, just appendix D, one of two, it is for $47,712. Remember this contract is, if you use us, you pay it, and so if there's money left over, you don't owe us nothing, so it's on an hourly basis, so if we, if we work so many, two months, and then you finally get an engineer, you don't owe us the full 47, you just owe us what we've been built.
Pay what you use.
Yep, so this is for your consideration, if Roy thinks it's good, and you want to sign it today, great, if not, you want to wait till, you know, two weeks, that's fine, it's entirely up to you.
One concern expressed by at least one of you was termination, and if you look at the top of page five of eight, the agreement's terminable on 30 days' notice.
Everything else looked good.
Yeah.
And the corrections were made, and I saw the one that said anything was all wrong.
No, it's, it's, as I explained with Toby, I had last year's contract, so I was able to compare, and there's nothing that's changed other than the dates, and I think the rates have changed.
Yeah.
The rates and the schedules have changed, but other than that, it's the same as what you've signed in the past.
Times past, it was like 43, 42, am I thinking right, Ed, I mean, it was a lot less, and the reason why it's jumped up, Brian Wright, he's also, he's a PE, but also he's a structural engineer, so that jumped him into class, level class two, structural engineer, I'm not going to try to use him as, as little as possible and go to Chris O'Brien, more to do calculations and things of that nature, so, that's the reason why the increase, just a little bit.
We would be glad to have something in place, but.
I think we should continue until we've got something else.
Oh, I would agree with that.
Motion to accept it, as is, today, in time.
Second.
In second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we all sign?
If you want to sign those three copies right there, one to be to Beth, one to be to Ed, and one to our company as well.
Do you want to do that for your part?
Just so we have them signing.
And I have nothing else for you from last year, no new information at all.
Have that one back.
You want to hold those four records?
Please. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks Toby.
Roger, you are next.
So it looks like we'll be meeting quarterly from now on.
Yep.
We've had, well, as Ed mentioned, we've had a few computer issues, I'm working on his, and we've been working on some other ones, it seems like things want to break down for Christmas, I guess, but we're, we should have that up very soon, we have, the only other thing I have to mention is, if you guys are, have looked at the cell phone idea, and where you might be with that.
I think we have that scheduled for our employee meetings, is that right, Beth? Is that a topic that we've?
It's one of the issues we're going to talk about, yes.
Right.
Okay.
When is that scheduled, next Monday or the second Monday?
It should be the second.
Wednesday of this month or February?
No, I think we're having one this week.
Yeah.
And that's about it, any other questions, though?
No, keep up the good work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The agenda is light today.
We need to appoint everybody, so they know they've got jobs.
Is there any other monthly business one that you have, or are you going to do appointments?
I don't have anything else.
Do we have a list of all these? The list.
Here is the ones that, we'll find, the way he's been appointed every year, so Nick has underlying positions, so if he comes to announce one, these ones are the ones for the board appointments.
These are all everyone?
These are the board appointments.
Okay.
All right, first up.
For our county attorney, entertain a motion.
Roy Johnson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to sign as we go.
We might as well.
For county highway supervisor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Would Ed root?
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
My hand is getting shaky, what's that called?
Relax. Parkinson?
Yeah.
Anxiety?
Anxiety. Appointment for county engineer.
Yeah, I'll put that, I'll put that. While you guys just did it.
Butler Freeman.
Yep, so we don't really need that one, because we've already done the nomination, or we already did a motion for that one.
Motion for our IT director, Roger.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Appointment for county courthouse custodian.
Bobby.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. EMA director.
Dean Grove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. West County veteran officer.
Claude McMillan.
Claude McMillan.
Claude McMillan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. West County 911 director.
Adam McCartney, question four.
Adam McCartney?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Oops, maybe throw those at you.
Is that all of them, or is there other stack?
We've got all.
The other ones are all the board appointments, that we mentioned boards.
All right, next one is our Title VI coordinator, Roy, I believe.
Yes.
Roy.
Oh, Roy, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Do we have somebody for that one?
We don't have anybody for this one, correct?
Who is it?
The alcoholic beverage.
No, I didn't get any responses for the ad, for, for that.
So we'll leave that open right now.
We'll leave that open for the alcohol beverage.
Yeah, we'll have to till we get somebody.
Keep advertising it, or?
Or maybe somebody from the audience will volunteer, the alcoholic beverage board here?
No alcoholics.
Say it again.
Alcohol Beverage Commission, that would be issuing permits to restaurants, or?
It'd have to be a Republican.
It would have to be a Republican.
My, my idea would be maybe Greg Waters.
Oh, we could ask him.
That's a good idea.
Okay, we'll ask him, we'll ask him, all right.
We'll keep that out.
Thank you.
Okay. This is to either accept or reaffirm the two appointments to our Board of zoning appeals.
I think this one's going to change.
We've already did one.
Right, so appointment number two needs to be struck from the record.
Jim, Jim Schwartzkopf, I would nominate for.
Second.
Other position.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I will.
There's, yeah, do we need to retype that?
I have another board.
Because it still has Keith's name on it, that still has Keith's name on it.
This is the old, was drafted before.
Yes, it probably was just before the other one.
And Todd took that position, thank you Todd.
So do we want Michael to draft it, or just strike his name?
You can strike his name out.
And type in Todd, or fill in Todd?
I'll fill it out, yeah.
You'll fill it out, I'm good.
Go ahead.
They have to sign it, not me, or Assistant Commissioners. They've added two copies, so that needs to be attached to that.
I already did the one for, the other appointment, so, this one's the one for, yeah, for Jim, so, yep, I'll take care of that.
This is for ADA coordinator, I believe currently Lisa McCormick.
Yes, Lisa McCormick.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
My hand is not making it this way.
We have two positions open, both for the property tax board of appeals, currently served by.
Let me make sure I get the right ones for you guys.
I was going to say that property tax is a different thing.
Martin, Adam, and Larry.
Chesney?
McChesney is the two appointments that you guys have, and they have both agreed to stay on if you want to reappoint them, I think Rick Smith is an.
Okay, so Adam and McChesney?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two positions for the Wells County Health Board, and I think currently Tom
Longenberger and McNabb, I don't remember her first name, Anne McNabb, and both are willing to serve again, correct?
Yes, yes, so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
served by.
Can you make sure I get the right ones for you guys?
I was going to say that property tax is different thing.
Martin Adam and Larry.
Chesney.
McChesney is the two appointments that you guys have, and they have both agreed to stay on if you want to reappoint them. I think Rick Smith is not.
Okay, so Adam and McChesney?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have two positions for the Wells County Health Board, and currently Tom Longenberger and McNabb.
And McNabb.
I don't remember her first name.
Anne.
Anne McNabb.
Mm-hmm.
And both are willing to serve again, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last is the sick bank committee comprised of three individuals and willing to serve again.
Mm-hmm.
You want to mention their names, so we have it?
Absolutely. Susie Reinhardt, Marlene Hoag, and Diana Collins.
Okay, so Collins, Hoag, and Reinhardt.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Two more.
No, you're not. You're just excited.
I was trying to be on the sick one.
We can make it into Reinhardt.
Yes, sounds good to me.
Beth can fix it. Good?
That's all.
I'd like to thank everybody who's been willing to serve in these positions, and I would like to make a motion, I would like to see us put these appointments on a more businesslike and competitive basis in the future, and I think that it would be a good idea to make all these one-year appointments that, with the exception of the positions that we serve as commissioners on these boards, that they would be filled by people that are turning in resumes and letters of application each year like we did for the APC and the BZA. So I want to make sure there's no misunderstanding, so that the current ones that are serving would be notified beforehand, so that they would know that they need to apply, and it's certainly not a criticism of anybody who's been appointed here now. It's, like I said, it's wonderful that you serve, and we thank you all for doing so, but I think it'd be really nice if we had information in resumes and applications for these people that are filling these positions as a service to our constituents in the county that we are serving. I think it will make a better basis for competition and stop the business as usual, but actually take time to consider each one, and if we need to even do interviews. We can advertise for the positions through the newspaper, but I'd also like to see it go on the website and the Facebook page for the county, and perhaps start looking in September, October, and cut off the deadline in November for the resume, so that we can review them and not wait till the last minute before we're making appointments. So that would be my motion.
So you would be for 2017?
Yes, starting for 2017.
I don't have a problem, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I think it was one of my things when I came in, I really didn't understand how people were on boards, and not knowing people, and I appreciate you got a little bit of their background, where they're coming from, and what areas of expertise, if you want to call it, in their field, and how it coincides with the position might fill, and I think that'd be a great idea, so we'll, like on a 30 or 60 day base, knows ahead of time.
And you are referring to the board appointments, not the employment appointments?
All the appointments that we are making as commissioners.
The annual appointment.
The annual appointments.
Are you talking about like the highway supervisor?
Everybody we could have a resume on and know who's who, and have their information. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
One thing that I have is, we were contacted, or Blake was contacted by the Lancaster Township trustee with respect to some vandalism problems with a couple of old cemeteries, and he had suggested that the county owned two of them, and it was my opinion that, I was familiar with a state statute that said township trustees responsible for cemeteries that are not properly being taken care of, or if there's association that has run out of money, or whatever, but within the last week or so, he's, the trustee dropped off at my office copies of documents that the Lancaster Township trustee had showing that two of these cemeteries, the actual deeds had been to the county commissioners, so the county may own a couple of cemeteries. I happened to have a chance to look at the General Cemetery Association law that was passed in 1997, I believe, with respect to the county actually owning a cemetery, but my recollection was that cemeteries managed by a county would call for the commissioners to appoint a cemetery commission, so I just want to report that apparently the county is the happy owner of the Old Bluffton Cemetery and the Murray Cemetery, and if you, I would suggest you direct me to complete my research and report to you as to, okay, if we've got it, what do we do with it now?
So moved.
Second.
Direct Roy to get on that.
There we go.
Did we have to accept that when they deed that to us?
Well, it might be kind of late to reject a deed.
I just was kind of curious.
A deed from 1838.
Wow.
So it's like, fine, here's the law, the General Cemetery Association law passed, like I said, I think in 1997, but the introductory section says it applies to all cemeteries, so it's like.
Can we find out what other counties, if they've encountered anything, and how they've handled it, I mean, from that standpoint?
I periodically get email with Bob Garrett in Huntington, and I can say, hey, how do you, how many cemeteries do you own?
It'd be nice if we'd have the authority to try and move back to the town.
Well, you know, that might be, and one consideration is, is that how is the tax base, you know, what tax base you're doing? If you say, well, this happens to be, these happen to be in Lancaster Township, let's dump it on Lancaster Township as opposed to the original Bluffton Cemetery, and I suspect it's probably the resting place of a lot of veterans.
Right.
And, you know, in some regards, how does the, it's a measure of how does the society, you know, how do you respect, you know, your veterans and those who've gone before? But it may be that that's what you'll need to do, is here's some more positions to advertise for, for the county cemetery commissioners.
Oh, we could ask for a pay raise, and we could do it ourselves.
There you go.
Good luck with that.
Oil and water. Bring, maybe bring your research back to the next meeting, or the February meetings, whatever, so.
Okay.
I have nothing that I can think of, I've been in a lot of things that I can't think of right now, so I don't think there's anything else.
Man?
Just a quick second?
Absolutely.
Good morning, Ben Beer, USI consultant, sorry I was late getting on your agenda. I wanted to get with you, we do your countywide bridge inspections. In October, we finished what we call the Phase II inspections. Right now, the state of things is a draft book, I'm going to be reviewing that today with Toby and Ed, they've seen it already. Really, the only action for you guys, if you'd be willing to do that, is sign a title page. When the books are finalized, you'll get either a paper copy or electronic copy, whatever you prefer, just saying that you agree with the assessment, and again, right now, it's in draft form, so, and I also included with you guys just a one-page replacement and rehabilitation schedule, shows the bridges that, at this point, we feel are need to be replaced or rehab. Lot of it is old news, it's bridges we know that have needed addressed, so that's really it. And when we finalize the books, I would anticipate at your next meeting, we will have those for you. Would you like to have paper? Would you like to have a flash drive? We can do whatever you want. Would you rather just one with the highway, one with the auditor? We can, however many the commissioners would like.
I have one in my possession, in a binder, but.
Yeah.
So do I.
Yeah, you write just paper copies for the, how about?
Flash drive works for me.
Okay, and it just would be in a PDF format? Yeah, sure, okay, we'll do that.
Yeah, and based on the inspections, you have your recommendation then?
We do, and in fact, what I'm going to give you this morning is just a draft.
Okay.
Of the priority schedule, which is also in the book, but one of the, you know, main outcomes, obviously, the inspection, is what needs to be addressed, so you get replacements, rehabilitations, there's a long list of maintenance items, and again, we're going to go through that with Toby and with Ed today, just to make sure they're on the same page. We might have some dialogue with our team back in the office. At the next meeting, we'll have the books finalized for you, so, and actually, by all means, during that time, if you guys have a question, or say, what about this bridge or that, it gives you an opportunity to look at it as well, so. That's really it, other than I would like to get your signatures just conditionally on these title pages, because that will go in the final record, so. And I'll give you also.
This is the page that needs to be made into motion?
Please.
What do we move it?
Allowing.
The commissioners.
Additional signatures on the bridge inspection report.
Okay, I move that.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Flash drive is okay for me, Bill. Okay, I'll just do all flash drives if that's, if you need paper, it's easy to make the books.
I have two.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm, I'll put one in the face, please.
No problem. So the next step in this whole process is we will re-inspect some of your bridges at the end of 2016, we call that Phase II-A. Our contract at that time will be finished, and so you would re-select a consultant to do your bridge inspections, probably sometime later this year, I would say, in the third or fourth quarter, you'll have to go through the selection process.
Very good.
The only other thing I have, I'd like to just also offer my recommendation for Ed to, you know, get compensated or some way to work something out. It is, I can attest to, because I deal with him, I deal with other county engineers and highway superintendents, there's a lot of work associated with the ERC, and you have to have one, and so, I, you know, I think particularly this year, with Bridge 193, a federal aid project, there's an enormous amount of reporting that's going to have to take place, so I put my two cents in to just say, I think it needs to be recognized as a lot of extra work. That's it for me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Maybe have him.
Thank you so much.
Re-read that job description for the ERC. Have him look at it, so we have multiple eyes looking at it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Ben. I have nothing else. Kevin?
No, no.
Kevin? Anyone else? Audience?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Motion to adjourn.
I'll beg it.
We are done. Thank you.
Don't forget to.